I want to make clear that for myself and for the city and for Chief Best, the First Amendment rights of residents must be protected and protesters must feel safe when they express their First Amendment rights.
And that's Mayor Jenny Durkan from a press conference in June of last year, just a few days after the Seattle Police Department's East Precinct was abandoned. Well, we are getting some more details now from the Office of Police Accountability about that event, who made the decisions to evacuate the precinct. But the answers we're hearing, well, not as neat and tidy as you might think. But when things get messy, it's time to call in Seattle News, Views and Brews, your coffee brick political podcast. We're here to help. I'm Brian Callanan. I'm a host on Seattle Channel. The views expressed here are my own. And I am with Kevin Schofield of Seattle City Council Insight. And Kevin, I just thought I'd bring you in here because you've been dealing with a whole bunch of stuff here, a whole bunch of messes on the city budget you've been trying to clean up over the past couple of weeks. Are you using mop and glow or what's that process like to try to clean that up?
I got a portable vacuum and I run around like.
There you go. Pulling up a lot of stuff. That's a pretty good factor.
Really good reading, really good reading glasses, tons of, oh my God.
You better believe it. You better believe it. You better believe it. Well, thanks for looking through that stuff. Thanks also to City Grind Espresso. Exciting news here. Our background noise sponsor for the audio podcast, they are back open at City Hall. Please do support them and all small businesses and they are the subject of our mug shot of the week. That's me with John, one of the owners of City Grind, hanging in there as customers start to trickle back. We gave him a mug. Also Riley has joined John in the ownership of City Grind. Thanks to her for her support as well. Thank you, City Grind. Definitely want you to hang in there. Please do become a patron. Support us at the $10 level on Patreon. We'll send you a Seattle News, Views and Brews coffee mug and you can get your mug shot on our show immediately, if not sooner. And finally, thanks to Converge Media. Converge airs the video version of our podcast on their YouTube channel Wednesday nights at seven. Let's get the party started with right here, right now. Well, we have a ton of budget stuff to talk about, but an interesting nugget on the Seattle City Council's agenda for the second full week of October. The council will likely vote on this ordinance about what's called acknowledgement pay for people working on the front lines during the COVID crisis. This is for qualifying employees represented by certain unions that contract with the city and also employees not covered by collective bargaining. A lump sum as high as $1,750 for these employees, depending on time served in person during the pandemic. And this would cost the city about $6.5 million, which they'd get out of the general fund. Kevin, I wanted your general take on this to start. The mayor sent this legislation to the council. The council's pushing it through. Why?
Well, so let's actually start with the context of how this got negotiated. This got negotiated as they were arguing, well, negotiating back and forth over vaccine mandates.
Right, 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 right.
So this, they just finished this round of negotiation. The city came down and said, everybody, all the city employees need to get vaccinated by this date.
Right.
And unions came back and said, well, that's the subject of bargaining. So let's go ahead and bargain that. And you know, you could look at this, if you squint at this, you could say, well, you know, they're getting $750 each and is that?
1,750, yeah.
1,750, 1,750, is that, you know, is it really because they're getting vaccinated? Is it really for, you know, frontline workers who are required to go into the office? What they're saying is it's for frontline workers who are required to go into the office.
Yeah.
And it's interesting, sort of in the context of that, when, one of the things they say here is they've been, they've been paying sort of a hundred dollars a month to city employees as, who have been working from home.
Yeah.
As sort of, you know, telework compensation for sort of using your home office.
Sure, sure.
If you needed to upgrade your broadband at home, things like that. So some, some money nominally to defray expenses of doing this. And what they've said is you get one or the other. You get paid for teleworking or you can get paid this 1,750 if you actually had to go into the office and work.
Right, right, right.
It's sort of a hazard pay of, of sort of, but you don't get to do both of those.
Right, 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 right. It's interesting though, I thought in that legislation here, it goes on to talk about the different unions involved. And then there's a very specific line in there that says, "The Seattle Police Officers Guild does not have a tentative agreement with the city." I think it's calling out some of these issues about vaccine mandates here, Kevin. That's what I read into that.
Spog has not negotiated the vaccine mandate yet. That's still outstanding and there's, you know, there have been lots of, I would argue, hyperinflated reports over the last week about, you know, the number of SPD officers who have not, you know, attested to their, to their.
Turned in their paperwork, yeah.
Yeah, turned in the paperwork about getting vaccinated yet. You know, there's still a little bit of time.
Yeah.
And you know, I, I thought, I thought the press coverage was, was a little too inflated, you know, hyperinflated because I mean, let's be honest, right? We're all deadline driven.
Sure, right, right.
We're all deadline driven, right? And you know, of course SPD officers are going to be the deadline driven too.
Okay.
Right? So you know, if, if two weeks before the deadline, only two thirds of them had put in this, you know, this attestation they have to do about, about certifying they've been vaccinated, yeah, I'm not surprised by that. I'll worry, I'll worry if three days before the number hasn't moved, but it, but it will have, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, and, and you know, I'm sure Spog is probably, you know, encouraged more of their officers to wait before, you know, filing that paperwork.
Of course.
Because it gives them more bargaining leverage.
It does, right.
If 95% of them two weeks before have, you know, have already attested they've been vaccinated.
Sure.
What leverage does Spog have left to get anything out of, out of the city from doing that?
Right, right, right.
So I'm sure a big part of it is a bargaining play.
Yeah, yeah.
And you know, I'm not worried yet. Maybe I'll be worried in a week, but I'm not worried yet.
It's interesting to see this financial lever applied though by the council and the mayor here. So we'll see what happens.
And we've talked, and we've talked, we've talked about this before, right?
Sure.
It's like, how, how should we feel about city employees and their unions using, you know, something they ought to be doing anyway?
Right.
Getting vaccinated.
Sure.
To extract more money from the city.
That's a tough one, yeah.
I mean, you can, you know, can you be pro labor and still look at that and go, you know, that doesn't really sound right.
Hmm, there's part, yeah.
It's tough, right? It's, it's a tough issue. You want to be pro labor. You want to support union bargaining.
Yeah.
But you know.
There's a public health issue at the root of this.
Yeah, there's a public health issue and, and there's a, you know, a public expectation that, that, you know, they should be doing this anyway, right?
Right, right.
Are we going to pay them for doing the thing that they should be doing anyway?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's tough. There's, there's no easy answer to that.
No, 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 but we'll keep track of it and thank you for the breakdown on that. I want to make sure we get back to, to budget land here because we're going to have our first public hearing on the city budget this week, October 12th. Kevin can't wait. I can't either. So this will be the first time, yeah, here we go. This will be the first time we're going to hear from the public on this $7.1 billion package that Mayor Durkan has proposed. Now, I know you said last week, there wasn't a lot in this budget that the city council could get mad about, meaning a lot of the ideas the council has been pushing for, alternatives to armed police response, for example. The mayor's basically funding those, but now we're going to hear from all those advocates out there starting to weigh in during public hearing time. I'm trying to figure out where do you see the battle lines being drawn with this budget for the 22, excuse me, 2022 year ahead? What do you think about that?
Well, I think certainly, I mean, there's, there's a couple of camps already and the biggest one right out there right now is what they call the solidarity budget.
Right, right.
Camp, which is an alliance of a number of advocacy groups. And they've, you know, put out their demands for what they think the city should do.
Right.
And you know, it's, and while the city is, is, the mayor's budget proposes a significant increase in the amount of money being invested in affordable housing.
They want more, yeah.
Solidarity budget is asking for an order of magnitude more than that, which, you know, to be honest, still wants to address the need for affordable housing in the city.
Right, right, right.
They want further cuts in SPD.
Mm-hmm.
Right? There are other social programs they'd like to see more investments in.
Yeah.
And you know, and you, one always needs to look at those kinds of coalitions of advocates and say, you know, what is their vested interest in this? Are they asking for more money in the budget for things that eventually will sort of trickle back to their organization as bigger contracts with the city, right? And there's some of that, not all of that, but there's, there's certainly some of that in there as well. So you have to follow the money and, and see how that colors the view of these organizations that are asking for this stuff. So I think there's going to be that and certainly the, there's going to be, you know, arguments over what's going on with SPD budget.
Yeah.
You know, beyond that, you know, there's always going to be questions about transportation.
Sure, yeah.
And.
Street, and street car is kind of rearing its ugly head again, but yeah.
Street cars coming back up again and the mayor hasn't put a lot of money into that.
No.
But a little bit more to say, okay, let's revive this and kind of think it through. And, and you'll recall, the mayor was against it until she was for it.
Yes, right, right.
It spent a couple of, you know, the first couple of years of her, of her tenure as, as mayor saying, we need, we need to go rethink this.
Yeah.
And then, and everybody else is saying, yeah, she's just looking for opportunity to ditch this thing. And then after two years of looking, they came back and said, no, we're for this.
Yeah.
Let's move this forward. And then the pandemic hit and the whole thing, you know, got pushed, pushed aside. And now it looks like she's trying to revive it once again for the next mayor and the next city council to sort of take from there.
Yeah.
So, but, but a lot of the transportation stuff is really hyper local, right?
Okay, okay.
It's very district based stuff. Where do we need street safety improvements? Where do we need more sidewalks?
Yes, we've seen a lot of that, yeah.
Particularly in, in North Seattle, there's still a lot of neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks at all.
No sidewalks at all, haven't for years.
And in South Seattle, there are a lot of neighborhoods, you know, particularly around Rainier Avenue that have, are just really unsafe, right? In terms of getting across these major arteries.
Yeah, calling for more safety projects for pedestrians, bikes, yeah.
And around the light rail stations, right?
Yes, right, 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 right.
Are we doing all the right things in those neighborhoods to make sure that we're not having collisions and, and pedestrian accidents?
Yes.
With, with light rail vehicles.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and so, you know, those are two places in particular. A lot of stuff around the West Seattle Bridge.
Yep, yep.
Both in terms of, you know, if all goes well, it's going to get repaired next summer.
Knock on wood, yeah.
You know, what, are there still improvements that need to be made over the next six months until then to, to deal with the fallout of having that bridge continue to be closed?
Yeah, and that affects both ends of the bridge, really. We're talking about Georgetown, we're talking about District One and District Two there when you come, when you think about those impacts.
Absolutely, absolutely. So the transportation stuff is, you know, it continues to be hyper local.
Yeah.
You know, there's some stuff in the fire department around Triage One, which is this new program to continue to address, you know, more of, of the, more of the kinds of issues that we're seeing on the streets with increasing homeless population.
Sure, right, yeah. So yeah, and I was, I wanted to make sure I threw in one because when you said homeless population there and you brought up Triage One, it made me think about this. I want to talk about the HOPE team, which is the team that sort of was begotten from the navigation team, if you will.
Right.
A group of social workers out there on the street, kind of working with different people and making sure they got the resources they needed. It looks like, and I want to try to fully understand this here because I know the mayor's office was talking to the council about this. They were saying, all right, the HOPE team is basically disbanded because we're going to be sending a $104 million check to the new regional homelessness authority from King County when it comes to homelessness. Your thoughts about the future of the HOPE team? I don't think it's going to be, it's certainly not going to be what it was beforehand. Any thoughts on this one?
No, it isn't. So at this point, to the extent that there are removals being done by the city, encampment removals being done, they're being done by two departments. They're being done by SDOT and they've been done by the Parks Department.
Right.
Which are the two departments that actually own and manage property, public property, where we're seeing encampments that may be creating public health or public safety issues, right? And so I think what I understood from the budget was that some of the resources in the HOPE team are going to move over to those two organizations to be coordinators with the regional homeless authority.
Got it, got it.
Make sure that they get outreach in place.
Okay, okay, yeah.
We're not assisting, right? And there are, there are two homeless shelters that are going to continue to be sort of contracted with directly by the city.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the Navigation Center.
Yeah.
And that's the Salvation Army Soto Center, because that one is actually going to be moving over the next six months anyway.
Right, 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 right.
But all the rest of the shelter contracts are moving over the regional homeless authority.
Yeah.
So they still needed some level, you know, a couple of coordinators to manage, make sure the information flow is all happening in the right place.
Right, right, right.
And that those organizations have the schedule of when SDOT and Parks Department are planning to remove encampments. So that they can get outreach in there in place and reach everybody and make offers of shelter.
Yeah.
To get people into better places before the city feels like, you know, okay, we have to come in and actually remove this.
Right, right, right.
And, and, and what, what the city is saying is they're not going to do the removals. Parks Department, SDOT are not going to do the removals until that outreach has happened and the people have been moved somewhere else.
That's right.
We'll see, we'll see, I mean, one can continue to be skeptical about that.
Yes, right.
Whether that will really be the way it works out or not.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll see. We've heard, we've heard stories like this before.
We have, we have.
It's, so it's definitely a bit of a change.
Yeah, yeah.
The Regional Homeless Authority CEO, Mark Jonas, says that they're going to be ready to step up and, and take this on.
Yeah.
Again, it's, it's a big change, so we'll see what happens there.
Yeah, yeah, change for the budget, change for our response to homelessness, a lot of changes there. I want to hold off on continuing our budget conversation for just a little bit because there's a very important story that we need to get to here. The Office of Police Accountability investigating the evacuation and abandonment of the Seattle Police Department's East Precinct last year. Did we find out who's accountable? Not as easy an answer as you might think. We're going to talk about it ahead on Now Hear This. Okay, cast your memory back to June 11th, 2020. This is three days after the Seattle Police had abandoned the East Precinct, surrounded by protesters in what was then called the CHAZ, the Capitol Hill Autonomous Zone. Soon after that, called the CHOP, the Capitol Hill Occupied Protest or Organized Protest. So on June 11th, then Chief Carmen Best and Mayor Jenny Durkan held a press conference to talk about the evacuation and event, and abandonment of the East Precinct. Here, Chief Best was talking about the challenges officers were facing at that time and who made the decision to leave the precinct.
As they were moving things out, you know, the decision was made to, you know, as officers were taking things out of the precinct, they didn't want to come back into the precinct and many of them did not. So we're still going to evaluate exactly the pinpoint of what, why, why that changed, but it didn't come from me.
An interesting choice of words there and we are talking about this because the Office of Police Accountability has just released its findings based on complaints that Chief Best and Assistant Chief Tom Mahaffey neglected their duty. So first up, Kevin, here, it appears that Mahaffey was the one who made the call to evacuate, but it's not totally clear from the OPA what Chief Best's role was in that decision. You researched this report quite a bit on SCC Insight.
Yeah.
What do you think about that?
It's a long report and it's really interesting. I encourage everybody to read it. And by the way, you should definitely check out the interview that our good friend Omari Salisbury did with the OPA Director and Meyerberg, talking about this report that they released. It's, it's, you know, and they, they get into a lot of the details around it.
Yeah.
So definitely, definitely worth watching this.
Yep.
And it's worth reading the report because just the narrative of.
What happened, yeah.
They did and, and piecing together, you know, this narrative. KOW did a really good story about a month, about a month ago. They got a few of the details wrong according to the, the, but they got most of the, they got the most of the details right.
Yeah.
So KOW story is good to read. Omari's interview with Meyerberg is great to listen to. But you know, at the end of the day, sort of on, on that fateful day where, where SPD moved out of the East Precinct, there were two decisions that were made. In the morning, there was a meeting with the mayor's office where the mayor's office basically said, we're going to take down the barricades outside of, of the East Precinct that are preventing protesters from marching down the street in front of the East Precinct. So we're going to do that today so that tonight they can march down the street because that is, has become a flashpoint and it's, what's happening out there is unsustainable.
Right.
Violent, we're getting hurt and it's unsustainable.
Yep.
So SPD, go figure out what you need to do. And SPD, from their start out saying, okay, well, clearly, you know, we need to remove, in that morning meeting, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
They talked to FBI and FBI told them there are credible threats that people are going to try to set that building on fire.
Right, right.
And you know, we can believe that the FBI had credible evidence or not. They didn't, haven't shared that evidence with SPD or with anybody else. We don't know what the evidence is.
Yeah.
But they told the SPD that there was credible, credible evidence. And that certainly informed the decisions that our police department were making around this and the mayor's office are making around this.
Sure, sure.
So SPD said, okay, well, in that case, we need to remove any evidence, any weapons.
Right.
Shut down computer systems so that nobody can get in there and get access to computers, right? And that stuff. And they, they started walking down that process and about three o'clock in the afternoon, Assistant Chief Tom Mahaffey for, for patrol operation, he runs patrol operations or ran patrol operations, looked at sort of the totality of this and said, okay, I don't think that we can assure ourselves that we can keep any personnel that are still in the East Precinct safe.
Safe, yeah.
So I'm going to make the call that we need to get everybody out. We will stage down the street at Volunteer Park and our plan is the next morning, we will go right back into there.
Yeah, this was not a plan for a long-term evacuation, abandonment at all.
It was supposed to be overnight.
Yeah.
And phone records that the OPA looked at said that he actually talked on the phone with Chief Best twice, right around three o'clock when he was making that decision.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So she was clearly in the loop and you know, maybe they were talking about them, how the Mariners were doing.
Sure.
But, I mean, realistically, come on, they were, this is what they were talking about.
Of course, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and so Mahaffey says he consulted with Best. She concurred with the decision.
Yeah.
Best said, I don't remember those conversations at all, but you know, it was his decision to make. I don't fault him for making those decisions.
Yes, right, right, right.
She said, I kind of wish I were consulted. Looks from the records like she was.
Yeah.
But, so there's some disagreement on what happened there, but it was pretty clear that Mahaffey talked to her and then he made the decision because it was his decision to make.
Right, 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 right.
And then they all say, nobody predicted that the CHOP was going to happen and, and there would be armed, you know.
Protesters, yeah.
Personnel guarding the entrances to that area that would, you know, basically create an armed conflict if SPD tried to go in the next morning.
Right, right.
Which is why it turned into this, you know, almost month-long closure of the East Precinct.
Right, right.
So, so, but you know, then you look back, so then when you, you listen to the things that Best were saying a few days, Best was saying a few days later.
Right.
You sort of have to tease apart those two decisions. The morning decision about removing the barricades.
Okay.
Which was clearly the mayor's office.
Yep.
And the afternoon decision about pulling all the personnel out of East Precinct, which was clearly Mahaffey's decision, but she knew about it.
Yeah, right.
And you could say, was she lying? Maybe, or was she just parsing her words very?
Half of the truth, yeah, mm-hmm, yeah. I'm not sure. And I guess in looking at that, just to follow through here, no allegations of dereliction of duty sustained in OPA's investigation here, which is partly understandable when you break it down as you say there. Here's what happened in the morning, here's what happened in the afternoon. Of course, in retrospect, in the, in the days that followed there, wow, this looked pretty crazy down there at the CHOP, as, as a lot of people know. But I was struck, and I know you were too, by a lack of any firm recommendations or, or answers really in this report. Some thoughts about that?
Right, so, so as you mentioned, Meyerberg and the OPA didn't find fault with any of their decisions based upon the information they were looking at at the time. And, okay.
Yeah, that's what they got.
We can argue about that, right? There's good policy arguments to have about, about that on either side, but.
Sure.
That was the conclusion they came to. But OPA and, you know, the Office Inspector General both tend to make recommendations about when things go this wrong.
Right.
And, and you know, even if they don't fault somebody for saying, well, you did the wrong thing in this situation, it's like, here are recommendations to make sure it never goes this wrong again. And they didn't do that, or at least they haven't heard from the OIG yet about.
Right.
About what they could have done differently. And maybe that'll come out in the next, you know, next wave of their Sentinel events work that they're doing.
Yeah.
But, but so far, you know, the OPA didn't have any recommendations. And one would think they'd be like, well, okay, clearly these folks didn't, SPD didn't have a checklist in place or any kind of decision-making framework about when do they abandon a precinct?
A building, yeah.
What, whether it's a fire or an earthquake or, or a riot or, you know, a credible threat to this, to, to the building.
Yeah.
Like, under all these circumstances.
What qualifies, yeah, right.
What, when do you, when do you evacuate this? And what are the steps you need to take and what planning needs to be done ahead of time? So there isn't this mad panic for a couple of hours to try to get everything out of there.
Yeah.
Who's got the list?
Yeah, right.
Here are the things we need to do. You know, what are the key questions you need to ask before you decide, okay, we're going to abandon this?
Right.
And who needs to be consulted about this?
So it's not a heat of the mo, not a heat of the moment decision. It's a decision they have a protocol for.
And, and OPA didn't say anything about that at all, right? That, that seems like a gap. That seems like a pretty big gap here in terms of SPD's pre-planning around this and a lack of, you know, strong recommendations from OPA to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, yeah, wow. Well, I want to keep following up on that, but I also know we need to tack back on the budget here because there's so much going on here. You've been doing a ton of work on it. I know with Omari on Converge, Budget School is rocking and rolling. Please check it out, folks, on Converge Media. I wanted to talk a little bit about the revenue side that you've been working on because I thought this was really interesting here. Looking at all the different revenue the city brings in, you got your property tax, you got your business occupation tax, sales tax, utility tax, those are the big ones out there. It looks like those amounts are rebounding fairly well as we get through the COVID economy here. It looks like those amounts are rebounding fairly well as we get through the COVID economy here. I wanted to talk about that kind of budget picture from the revenue side, Kevin.
Right. Property taxes never really went down.
Right, okay.
And that, that was, you know, 20, 25% of, of, of the, of the city's revenue. So
Okay, okay.
General fund revenues. So that was, that, that was a big saving grace for, for the city. That really helped pull us through the, the pandemic in a lot of ways. BNO tax took a big hit, but it looks like it's almost back to pre-pandemic levels. Their utility taxes took a little bit of a hit. That's rebounding pretty well, a little slower. And sales taxes also took a big hit, but seems to be coming back pretty quickly as well, right? So consumers are out there spending things again. So, uh, we're almost back. You put those big four together and we're almost back to 2019 levels.
Yeah.
And that, that's a big deal. So in the meantime, we now also have the second tranche of the federal ARPA funding.
Yep.
It's a big chunk of money.
COVID relief money, yep.
Now, the payroll tax. Yes. The first year payroll tax money went to dealing with the, you know, the, the cut of, uh, the cut in revenues because of the pandemic. But now the, this council's spending plan has kicked in when they have
Right.
percentage formulas about that. There's also an allocation there to top off the general fund revenues back to kind of 2019 levels. And that's going to be about $80 million. The mayor's actually proposed a lot more should go into general fund revenues than that. And along, along the way, she's, she's consistently said, hey, we really shouldn't have an overly prescriptive spending plan on the payroll tax revenues anyway.
Yeah. And this is a big one. I was going to say, there's some history to that. Back when the payroll tax was first brought up, she didn't, she didn't approve that legislation. She just let it pass without her signature to become law, just to establish the payroll tax to begin with. And then when they put out the spending plan, she didn't sign that either. So this is part of that history, I think. Yeah.
She's, she's saying, why are we tying our own hands? This is, this is crazy. So, so they've got these two big pots of money, the ARPA funding.
Yep.
And the payroll tax.
Yep.
And the payroll tax comes with a spending plan that says there should be, you know, we want to see this month, this much additive spending on these different kinds of budget categories.
Yep, yep, yep.
Affordable housing to
62% there. Yeah, right, right.
Yeah. And, and so what the mayor has done is she's invoked a principle of budgeting, which says you spend the money with the most restrictions on it first.
Yeah, yeah.
And the least restrictions on it last. And that way you, all the way through, you maximize the amount of flexibility you have with the things you can, you can fund.
Yeah, we touched on this last week. Yeah, keep going.
Right. So the ARPA, the ARPA funding is very restrictive. It says you can spend on this, this and this.
Yeah.
So she filled up the buckets in the payroll tax spending plan as much as possible with payroll, uh, with ARPA funding first. And then poured in enough payroll tax to top them up to the level that the spending plan requires.
But then took the rest of that payroll tax.
Took the rest and moved it over into general fund.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so now we're going to have to see what the city council does with that.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and it's going to be, it's going to be harder. I, I think they would like to go back and, you know, spend it all the way originally says in the payroll tax.
Sure.
But they're not going to be able to, you know, cover everything else that they want to spend.
Right.
There's sustained funding for things like, you know, participatory budgeting and the Equitable Development Initiative and the Equitable Communities Initiative.
Yes, yes, yes.
Where the mayor proposed not just sort of another year of one-time funding, but let's find a sustainable source so we can continue to fund these in the long term. And the council is going to be all about that. They're going to love that.
Yeah, yeah.
But if they take away the payroll tax funding for that, they're going to have to fund something else to fund it.
Yeah, yeah. That's going to be interesting to see it because when you go out on, on a limb like that, I guess I'd say, when you set up a spending plan like that, it's, it's difficult to go back on that. And I know we've seen this happen in budget years past where there's a certain prescriptive amount that needs to go here, there. And, and these things always get changed, I think, during the budget process. It's, it's going to get tweaked.
Yeah. The, the council goes back. The council's tweaked their payroll tax spending plan already, right? Will they do it again?
Yeah.
Probably in this year, but definitely in future years, right?
Yeah.
You know, that, all the restriction, it, it's not like, it's not like there's any externally imposed restrictions on how they spend that money.
Right.
If they hadn't written a spending plan, it would all be general fund money and they can spend it however the heck they want, right?
Right, right.
So, so, uh, you know, they are in fact, as the mayor said, tying their own hands. They, they have said they're doing that as a promise to taxpayers, saying, well, we're going to spend the money the way we said, we're going to spend the money.
Yep, yep.
Um, but don't change their mind.
I know, and it just makes me, yeah. It makes me think about going to the back of the start of it. Well, why do you need this tax to begin with? Then they laid out this big plan and put out all these percentages and stuff. So it, it'll be interesting to see how that thing morphs over the next couple of weeks. And I know we're going to keep talking about it, Kevin. I'm going to put a pause on that for now because I know there's a lot more to talk about that because we need a break from this and let's start, start talking about drugs already. Say no to drugs, kids. I'll, I'll put that aside. But also, should we decriminalize the psychedelic kind? That's coming up on what's next. So Kevin, this past week, the city council passed a resolution to effectively decriminalize the use of psychedelic drugs like mushrooms, asking the SPD to make this their lowest law enforcement priority. This is a non-binding resolution, not an ordinance, so a recommendation really to Seattle Police about these substances. I know Councilmember Swant was pushing back, saying, we need the full ordinance on this thing. But Councilmember Herbl was saying, now wait just a minute. We're trying to get some more details and some more work in here. And also the state's working on this too. This mini battle over psychedelic drugs. What do you make of it?
Oh, uh, this is a fascinating space. So, you know, to the point you just made, there is a local task force on, on, uh, addiction and recovery that's supposed to make some recommendations about, about this sort of thing. And so because there are, you know, historically, when you look at, uh, marijuana and, and some other, and many other drugs, there have been tight laws passed that ended up being in many cases excuses for racist and biased enforcement.
Targeting people.
Yep, that had, that had very disparate impacts, right? I'm not aware of evidence yet that, that, that shows that there are those same kinds of disparate impacts on enforcement of these drugs for, uh, for psychedelic drugs as there have been for marijuana and cocaine and fentanyl and, and other drugs. But, um, uh, I, I just, I, I'm not aware of data. So the data may exist. I just haven't seen it yet.
Okay, okay.
But, uh, uh, the state is also looking at policy, state legislature and the governor are looking at state policy around, uh, criminalization of psychedelic drugs.
Yep, yep. They were working on this last year.
Councilmember Herbl said, said, let's wait till we hear from those two before we jump into a lot. So
Right.
Uh, they passed a non-binding, as you mentioned, resolution, which requests SPD and the city's attorney office, city attorney's office to deprioritize this. So officially, they haven't decriminalized anything, but
Right, right.
But it's a request that's out there. Now, you know, there is a bunch of emerging research that says that, um, there are some very positive medicinal purposes for psychedelic drugs, magic mushrooms and peyote and things like this, particularly dealing with things like, um, you know, the kinds of traumatic effects that, um, our soldiers have seen.
I see, I see. Yeah, PTSD, things of that nature.
PTSD, things like that.
Yeah.
There've been some, you know, some studies showing that there can be some real benefits from this.
Okay.
I think one of the interesting issues you have to think about is, are we talking about doctors prescribing these? Or are we talking about self-medicating?
Yeah, right. Those are two very different things, yeah.
They're two very different things. And, you know, I, I think there's a very strong case to be made for the first, right?
Sure.
We should be, um, encouraging more medical research around this and, you know, licensed doctors looking at how they can,
Okay.
they can prescribe these when appropriate to use. There's a whole other policy question around self-medicating.
Yes.
And if you read the resolution that the council passed, you know, it, it says it should be, you know, decriminalized for broad, you know, set of uses, including, and I quote, personal growth.
Yeah, right.
So it's like, that, that's, that's not in the medicinal use, right? We're talking about self-medicating here, right?
For personal growth, okay.
For personal growth. And so I don't want to necessarily wait and say that's a good thing or a bad thing, but there's some very big, you know, challenging, difficult and nuanced policy questions.
Yeah.
And need to be hashed out around.
Yeah.
And, and not just, let's not just all lump this into the, you know, the, the, oh, this is about doctors, you know, prescribing these things. Because that's not what the council just passed.
No, no.
In the resolution.
And, and, and this is a different thing too. And it's not just the city wrestling with this. I know I covered this a couple of months ago, uh, back in the early part of this year, when the state Supreme Court was talking about this, basically nullifying the state's, uh, drug possession law. The, the legislature put a few patches on that, but this is a conversation that is really happening at the state level right now. Supreme Court's talking about it. So a lot of different pieces here. Not just a resolution and, and very important you point that out, Kevin. So thanks for that breakdown. We're going to keep an eye on that story, of course. It is treat time. Always time to wrap up the show with something sweet to have on your coffee break here. Uh, we're not going to talk about psychedelic drugs here, Kevin. Uh, let's, let's try to down, down a notch here if we could. Let's, let's try to bring it back, bring it back if we can. I wanted to show you, if I could, a vanilla custard tart. Check this thing out here.
It's, it's, it's not a pot brownie. Okay.
No, no.
That's gorgeous.
And so this is, this is the thing. My daughter has been working on these and the problem I'm running into is this. Do you ever make something that looks so beautiful that you don't want to eat it? You know what I mean? I'm, I'm kind of challenged right now. This thing is so awesome. I, I don't know. It's, I, I've left it.
It's gorgeous.
I know. It's, I'm going to leave it be. I'm, I'm not going to touch it.
I, I noticed a strawberry in there. And one of, one of the things that it's, it, it's really cool and it's actually really easy to do is sort of that sliced fan out strawberry.
That's, that's a thing.
You, you, um, you, you take it and you hold the strawberry and you do sort of vertical slices about 80% of the way, starting at the bottom. Not quite all the way up to the stem, but 80% of the way. And then you just kind of push down the top and it just kind of fans out like that.
Indeed.
And it's, and it's really cool. And it takes like, you know, maybe two minutes of practice. You know, you'll, you'll wreck a couple of strawberries first and then you got it. You can just do it over and over. And it looks so cool. It's an easy thing you can do to like six strawberries on, you know, a whole variety of different desserts.
Yes, yes.
Breakfast and yogurt or whatever.
Okay, okay.
And it's, it's one, it's sort of in this class of like, here's this really cool thing. It turns out to be really simple, but looks awesome.
It looks really cool. All right. Well, maybe I won't eat the beauty, but it's, it's good to let people know how to do it.
Go eat it.
I will. I, I need a moment. I need a moment with the tart. Sorry. I'll leave it over here for a minute. Well, thanks for that breakdown, man. And thanks for the trick on the strawberries. That's always a good one to learn, anybody. We'll talk about tomato roses at some point, Kevin. That's, that's another trick, a whole nother, whole nother show on that one, I imagine. Uh, thanks also to our patrons, everybody who's listening out there. It's Seattle News, Views and Brews, where you can always find out what's brewing in local politics. Subscribe on iTunes, Spotify, wherever you might listen. Again, please do become a patron on Patreon. If you like what you're hearing, we really could use your support. Thanks also for watching on Converge Media as well. We will see you next time.
Seattle News, Views and Brews is an independent production of Calanan Media Services. Copyright 2021.